Good evening, everyone. Right now it's three o'clock, a little bit in a couple of minutes late. And today, our city council and also staff, we gather together, have the study session for our very important fiscal planning for the next year that is starting from July 1st, two thousand twenty-two through June 30th, two thousand twenty-three. So this is a good opportunity for us to review our previous on the financial situation and project the next year. I will hand over to our city manager and also your financial staff. Thank you.
Great. So, um, good afternoon, Mayor Ding and city council members. So tonight, or today, we'll be presenting the general fund, just the general fund fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. Um, so we're going to start off with a brief overview of the budget with highlights of the major revenue and expenditure projections. And then next, each department will be presenting their fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two accomplishments, their twenty-two, twenty-three goals, and then any major changes in their proposed budgets for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, then following the department presentations, council can ask questions and provide comments on the proposed general fund budget. Then we'll take public comment, and finally, council can discuss and provide directions to staff. Before I start, I just want to give a real shout out to Liz, who just started with us in November and has done an amazing job. She's been here every night for the last, like, three weeks till midnight and on the weekends, and it's just an incredible job. And it's really, you know, coming right into a city and starting off and doing the budget is incredible, so. I would thank her for all that time. Um, so get, uh, oh, you know what I want to do first is I want to, um, everybody has a packet, but I also, um, and, um, most people have a budget, um, binder, uh, manual binder, but it does have a lot of amazing things in there. So I just kind of wanted to do an overview of what's in the binder, so you can follow along with us. So the first page is our, just our organizational chart by function. Um, and then the next page is our general fund revenue and expense, and it has, um, the actuals for nineteen, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, our twenty-one, twenty-two amended budget, our twenty-one, twenty-two projected actuals, and then the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. So that has our total revenue and total expense. And it's rolled up by, um, by type, so not, not completely in detail. And then following that are all the department budgets. Uh, so, so we have the department budgets, and then we have their, um, oh, no, we have revenues first. We have my financial summary of revenues, and, um, then we have the department budgets. And it includes their budgets, their narratives. That's all about the reminders, okay? And so we get started. Um. So I'm really happy to report for the first time in three years, we have a, um, our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget is a balanced budget. Uh, with revenues of, uh, a little over twenty-five million, the proposed expenses of twenty, um, close to twenty-four million, we are showing there will be a surplus of one point six million. Um, so the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three revenues include the American Rescue Plan funding. Um, and we, um, were allotted two point six mi- million from the American Rescue Plan. We got one point three million last year, and we'll get another one point three million this year. Um, and as, as this is one-time funding, it should not be used for ongoing expenses. Uh, so, uh, if we subtract it, it still shows there will be a surplus of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And we have not programmed that one point three million, just so you know. So for a quick overview of the, uh, projected revenues for twenty-two, twenty-three, as I said, um, so fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, general fund revenues are projected to be twenty-four million. And for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the revenues are projected to be twenty-five million. So that's an increase of about one point two million or, um, almost five percent over projected actuals. And if you want to know which pa- page I'm kind of going over, which page three. And it's the Fund One Hundred, General Fund Revenue and Expense. Got it? No, I know page three, you didn't get the page number for some reason. It's the one without the page number, yes. Okay. Um, so as I said, for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the projected actuals, um, uh, revenues are twenty-four million. And for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, revenues are projected to total twenty-five million. And this is an increase of about one point two million or almost five percent over projected actual revenue for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, but I wanted to say that the real growth in revenue occurred in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two when hotels were kindly allowed to fully reopen and tourism-related revenue just really rose significantly following the shelter-in-place closures of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. For fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, TOT increased by three point three million or a hundred and fifteen percent over twenty-twenty-one. And then sales tax increased by one point three million or twenty-five percent. And then the total general fund revenue for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two increased by six point four million or thirty-five percent over fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. So that's where the real growth occurred, and that's when we really saw the, um, what happened, you know, as the economy recovered. And so we have a tremendous growth in TOT and sales tax. Is this where we ask questions? Um, you can throw questions out, that's fine, yeah.
Um, regarding the TOT tax, was there also, at the same time that it was, you know, increasing as far as, you know, people visiting, were there also, uh, any increase in the number of rooms in the, in the expansion of hotels or any addition? Was that exactly the same?
I, I believe it was pretty much the same. Um, the, there was some renovations that were completed, um, but I think we're, we're, we're looking at the same number.
Okay.
There was actually the, and now I can't say that for sure, the bungalows, I think, um, just were completed on, on spa- on, on Napa Street, yeah.
And when's the last time we actually raised the TOT?
That was in twenty, twenty, twenty-one, yeah.
So this also reflects like an increase as well, or?
It was fourteen. It was nineteen, I just said. November two thousand eighteen, voters approved, let's see, that's two thousand eighteen. Okay, so in November two thousand eighteen, um, the TOT rate increased ten percent to twelve percent. Um, and then on, um, in, and then another one percent was, that was voted in, was authorized on September first, two thousand nineteen. That's the amount that went over to the House of Representatives.
Okay. Thank you.
So that means with cruise fund, we already received a half or we received a both? You know, one point, one point six, meaning rescue in the fund.
Oh, we received one point three last year, and then we received one point, we'll receive one point three again in July.
In July, yeah, that means the next fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so the general fund revenue forecast is, uh, driven primarily by property tax, uh, transient occupancy tax, the TOT and sales tax. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, property tax is projected to be two hundred and fifty-seven thousand more than, um, twenty-one, twenty-two budgeted revenue and is increasing by five point five percent, which is substantial. It's a pretty good increase for property tax. Uh, the city, the city, as we've talked about, is really reliant on hotel and sales tax, and that represents fifty-one percent of the total general fund budget. Uh, our sales tax expert is forecasting revenue from regular and public safety sales tax at three point, um, almost three point nine million, and Measure B sales tax of two point, almost two point nine million. So the combined total of six point eight million is six hundred and four thousand more than fiscal year twenty-two, um, total sales tax, uh, revenue of six point two. And then for fiscal year, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, staff is projecting TOT will be six point, um, almost six point four million. And this is approximately one point seven million more than, than what we termed as pre-pandemic normal. So what we use for our, we, we were, um, uh, using nineteen, twenty as our, uh, pre-pandemic normal. So when we were forecasting revenue, we would take a percentage. Um, last year, we budgeted at eighty percent of pre-pandemic normal, and we actually came way above that. Uh, but we just didn't know what was going to happen last year. So, um, this year, we're, we're one point seven million more than that nineteen, twenty total. Um, and our budgeted TOT revenue this year is still somewhat conservative um, due to the unknown concerns with the COVID-nineteen variant, variants, um, possible fire-related smoke issues or, and/or recession concerns. So we kept it. We didn't go all the way to the top where we could have. Then the Sonoma Valley Fire District, um, uh, provides ALS medical services and, um, and that's where they staff the engines and ambulances, uh, with paramedics. And under the contract terms with Sonoma Valley Fire District, the city receives a hundred percent of the emergency medical services revenue. So the growth in ambulance billing was kind of, um, growing steadily, but began to decline in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen with an increase in Medi-Cal and other insurance write-offs. Uh, fortunately, we have, um, a program that we've, um, a part, we are a part of, it's called the IGT program, and it actually gives us back some of the Medi-Cal write-offs, and that's through the federal government. So that helps with some of that loss. So for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three EMS revenue is projected at two point three million. And then just some of the other larger that we've discussed is the one point nine trillion, the one point nine trillion American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, that was enacted on March tenth, two thousand twenty-one. And we got a total of two point six million in funding. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the received, the city received the first half of the funding, one point three million. And the ARPA funding was discussed at the June twenty-second, twenty-one budget adoption hearing, and council decided that the revenue when received would be used to offset expenses such that the re- use of reserves during the two, previous two fiscal years, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one would be restored. Um, the second half of the one point three million will be received this fiscal year, or the coming fiscal year, and has not yet been programmed. Uh, cannabis business tax was also approved by the voters in November twenty-twenty. And for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're estimating a hundred and fifty thousand in ca- cannabis tax revenue. That also is probably low, um, but we'll, um, be updating that when actual revenue from the first dispensary was received. Uh, so now I'm going to turn to expenditures. Um. Most of the department expenditures are going to be, um, provided by the department heads, but I'll provide a bit of detail before they begin. For salaries, we incorporated a three point five percent salary increase for all employees. So we're just, so if you, like, if you're going through, um, you want to get to where the department start. So, what, this doesn't appear to be. After page thirteen, you know, that's revenue, so. So if we go to page fifteen, um, we haven't started that yet, but that's where all the department, um, budgets will start. Uh, so for salaries, we incorporated a three point five percent salary increase for all employees. The SEIU contract is up on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and we're currently in negotiations. So this amount is just a place we'll go. The salary changes, uh, from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three also include step increases and minor position allocations. Benefit changes include ves- vendor cost changes and employee benefit choices. So the vendor cost changes are for medical increases, which were actually pretty minor this year. Do you remember the percentages? That was eight percent. Oh, that was, um, Liza. Yeah, anyway, it was quite low this year, which we were, um, fortunate, because in the last couple of years, it's been, it's been going up, um, steadily. Um, there's an addition of a part-time retired new tenant who is assisting finance, wealth, and acting city manager. Uh, property and liability costs increased eight percent from the previous year. And it's, liability insurance is just going through the roof. And there's not much that we can control, because it's just, nobody wants to insure in California anymore, so. And the property and liability insurance, uh, is allocated among city departments and funds based on how staff is allocated between the departments. Uh, the transfers to the, um, MIS Internal Service Fund increases here due to maintenance costs on the new security software. Um, and now I'm going to turn to each department to provide overviews of their accomplishments, goals, and budgets. And so I get to start. So we've got city council, and really, you should, you should be doing this, all of you. So, um, so I'm going to quickly go over your accomplishments, and you can provide any more accomplishments that you, that you, um, completed and things should be mentioned. So for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, you completed the preferred Caltrans restriping of Broadway. Uh, we opened the first cannabis dispensary in city limits. We approved application procedures and guidelines to allow for, for a potential second retail storefront cannabis dispensary. Uh, we completed Phase Two of the council chambers refurbishment, including the commission and installation of ten large-scale photographic art pieces, and that's kind of on, on the city clerk as well. Um, we adopted a fire impact fee for new development within city limits. We executed a fifty-five-year amended and restated lease agreement with Vintage House. We called a special election to fill an unexpected vacancy on the city council. And we made appointments to the city commissions and committee, um, adopted a set of council norms and expectations in the Sonoma Way. Uh, we reorganized the community services and environment, environment commission, the CSEC, to create two new committees, um, which will be coming up on the, uh, May eighteenth, uh, meeting, uh, the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Committee, the PROS, and the Climate Action Committee. We designated three historic districts, including a terrain district, Sebastiani-Cottis district, and Broadway Corridor di- uh, district. And we contracted with Andrew, Andrew Hennings, um, to assess the current homelessness programs, policies, and systems in the city of Sonoma and Sonoma Valley. We extended the joint and mutual fire protection and emergency medical services agreement between Sonoma Valley, Valley Fire District and the city of Sonoma for an additional five years. And we reestablished the honorary appointed volunteer physician of city historian. So key changes for the fiscal year twenty-one, or twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Uh, we have an increase for the city share of the mayor's and council members association of Sonoma. It's for part-time association clerks, so that was an increase of six thousand. We have an increase in training and conferences, um, for travel expenses related to in-person conferences of eight thousand. Uh, we have a decrease for the council chamber art renovation project. Um, the funds that are included in the budget, um, are just needed to finish the project. And we have a decrease for the council chamber upgrades to allow for hybrid in-person, um, teleconference meetings, because that project was finished. And next, we have city clerk.
Well, so we're, um, a couple of the core examples of what the city clerk's office does. Um, one of the things besides, we obviously were the elections official, elections official for the city. Um, we are the custodian of records, so we have all public records requests. And we're, uh, as part of that is records management for the entire city. We support the commissions, um, and administration, so all of the recruitment for that, uh, equipment, the board watching their terms comes through my office. And then we also staff the cultural and arts commission, um, with the help of Lisa Jackson, our special, our city manager and analyst. The other thing that's not included in our mission to be is, um, our office is also part of public information to be for the city. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two accomplishments included the completion of the special election to fill the one unexpected vacancy. Uh, we completed recruitment and onboarding of new commissioners and head members. The, also the recruitment and onboarding of new cast members. Worked with council app, app committee to complete Phase Two of the council chambers. And implemented hybrid meetings for city council and mission meetings, so that we could have the public participation via Zoom and in person. Um, part of that, I just wanted to give you a few numbers. The public records request, we completed a hundred and thirty public records requests. There was over ten thousand pages, um, that we have to review. Those can amount to a, um, a note that says we have nothing, or you contacted the wrong agency, to one that we've had in the past that was over fifteen thousand emails. Um, so they vary, they range greatly, takes quite a bit of our time. We did twenty-one, we, um, completed twenty-one regular council meetings and eighteen special meetings, including the packet processing for those. Seventy-four resolutions and eight ordinances and the processing of those. Um, some of the goals, that are the goals for twenty-two, twenty-three from my office is we're going to explore, create, and implement a citywide email policy, including routine automatic dispatching and accounting processes. Um, implementation of a new records retention special and update policy. We're continuing to add prior city records, including cemetery records that before this time had not been digitized. They're on the paper, so they're searchable, um, to the records management system that we have. Um, we're also looking at implementing either a different records management solution, a running software, or working with our current vendor if they're able to, um, create or to implement a public file server. Those records are available to members of the public via our website. And then we're also going to, um, complete a vital review and implementation of our public dimensions code to make sure that the appropriate individuals are reporting, um, for the requirements through the commissions committees and also inquiries, and that will be with the agencies and the city attorney. The major change in the budget for the city council is, uh, for the city clerk is the increase in election expense. Um, the registrar voter has voted, or has given us a number for three council seats and possibly one measure, and it's, we always use the high end, because you don't know if it's going to be low or high, depends on how many items are on the ballot. Um, and that number that they've given, they've given us is seventy-five thousand dollars. So that is, that's the only change really to the city clerk's increase in.
Um, with regard to the, uh, the election expense, you know, based on the conversation we had at the last meeting, that potentially there's extra work to be done by the city clerk's office in implementing the, uh, campaign finance ordinance that we will at some point adopt. Um, do you see any, uh, increase in cost for that or training or?
There, there very well may be. At this point, it's kind of hard to say what that could be. Uh, and that may be something that's a good thing, that I know I'm going to a training, um, in jail with FPPC on campaign finance that is, you know, costs are just the travel associated with it. Uh, but it definitely will take additional, because it's something I have in my heart. The overall part hasn't been set, so maybe something we need to look at additional.
Additional, and we could put that in your election. It could be training or, you know, depending on, um, what the ordinance is, if there is some sort of, uh, you know, you have to impose fees and, and all of that, and maybe some extra clerical, um, time. And just, you know, I just maybe, I think it's good to put something in there, because, you know, we haven't been doing any of that. And that's really adding a lot of, a lot of paperwork.
And we have, we are, in our department, we basically are a partner of two, myself and Lita, and then Sarah Tracy, who's at the city manager's office. She works on civic engagement, which I'm part of that side as well. So it is, it's a, um, so I appreciate that. Have that too. And one thing I forgot to mention, because, um, the city council does have goals. And so we'll be meeting, uh, in, hopefully in early August, and we'll, to talk about our strategic plan, strategic goals for the next fiscal year. So, um, I didn't mention that, but, I mean, there's still quite a few things that, that still need to be done, but we'll, we'll be upgrading that. And I want to do that.
Okay, and, oh, I'm up again. So, um, for the city manager, um, so the city manager is the chief executive, executive officer of the city and is appointed and takes direction from the city council. Um, uh, manager is responsible for the day-to-day efficient performance of all city operations, implementing city council policy, formulating staff recommendations to council on policy and other matters, and preparing and submitting the annual bud- budget, among other things. Um, so for, um, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, accomplishments, we, we're still continuing with the city's overall COVID-nineteen response. Um, including continued community and valley coordination with COVID-nineteen relief, continued adjustment of city workplaces to enhance COVID-nineteen protections for our staff and community, and that enable our offices to safely reopen to the community. Uh, quite a bit of more of COVID-nineteen, uh, on, you know, we open, opening the local economy and then closing it, and then reopening it for county and state regulations. Uh, we've worked on valley food distributions and addressing homelessness and housing during COVID-nineteen to ensure the safety of our most vulnerable members of society. We worked on, and this is a continual thing, this is also something that Wayne is very involved in, emergency preparedness and speed maker as well, which is not for right now, including wildfire response and preparation. And then transitioning from one city manager to another, and then, uh, reclaiming for another city manager. Um, maintain the quality of the city staff through effective recruitment. And voice in the city's needs regarding emergency preparedness within the larger Sonoma County region's interests. Voice in the city's needs regarding housing and homelessness, adopting new financial policies, uh, working through a council member vaca- vacancy with the council and city attorney. And refunding existing RDA bonds to take advantage of lower interest rates that will provide significant cost savings for the life of the bond. And goals for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, effectively transition to a new city manager and recruit for a new city manager. Uh, support the city council's key objectives and initiatives, manage the remainder of the pandemic, pandemic and its economic impacts. Um, continue to do the ongoing collaboration, coordination with community partners in Sonoma Valley Latinx, Latinx, is that the name you said? That's terrible. Um, COVID-nineteen Support Task Force. Uh, restart discussions with state parks regarding the lease of the Casa Garde parking lot. Improve employee engagement and devise new methods for recognizing achievements and accomplishments. Ensure all employees, including the management team, receive annual performance reviews that include accomplishments and performance goals for the upcoming year, as well as opportunities and assistance with promotional desires. Update the employee policy manual, create an effective succession plan for city departments, increase organizational effectiveness, promote employee education, training, and use of technology, and continue hiring capable, talented employees. So for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, uh, the key changes include the city manager recruitment increase of, uh, cost of thirty thousand. Uh, we're finishing up the city manager, former city manager contract of thirty-six thousand. Uh, labor negotiations, because we are in labor negotiations, and will continue probably through the next fiscal year at twenty thousand. Uh, we've, um, put in an SEIU compensation study. We've already completed a management, um, compensation study. And then the reductions, um, we, uh, it's thirty thousand for the, uh, part-time or, uh, somebody to administer the city's affordable housing program that actually just went over to planning. Uh, we have, uh, we had put in fifty thousand through, um, mid-year budget, um, read, uh, adjustment. A fifty thousand for a grant writer, I have to increase that fifteen thousand. Hopefully, we're going to find an in-house contractor to do that. And then I took out thirty thousand for the valid government study, and that can be put back in if, um, council so desires. So next, we have finance, and Liz.
So on page twenty-six, our accomplishments in the finance department are the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two comprehensive budget, last year's budget, was prepared on time and adopted by council um, last June. We addressed the coronavirus pand- pandemic and effectively transitioned to an unanticipated virtual environment, and then made adjustments to reopen again. Um, updated water shut-off policy and procedures to respond to SB nine ninety-eight. We updated the garbage contract. We updated the five-year forecast for ongoing financial forecasting and planning. We completed the federal American Rescue We completed the federal American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA reporting. We refunded the existing RDA bond. We created and adopted a budget and fiscal policy, fiscal, or sorry, fixed asset capitalization policy, a debt policy and veterans' preference policy, sorry. Updated and revised the comprehensive fee schedule that was adopted by council last June. For our goals for this next year, we are going to update the city fee schedule and move to a comprehensive annual updates, continue to update and add relevant financial policies, improve procedures for fixed asset acquisition and disposition, and implement biannual inventory, fully implement and utilize Springbrook's human resources module, add the city CIP to Springbrook, internal update, internally update the water bill format within Springbrook, our accounting software. Transition to the, transition the unsupported water meters, reading to the software in the cloud, complete the financial analysis of the cemetery fund and develop a plan for resolution for the deficit of the fund. Complete financial statement audits for the fiscal years twenty-two, one and twenty-one, twenty-two by the end of the year. Prepare the city's fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget and we'd like to submit that for awards. Continue cross-training and identifying other opportunities and for the finance staff. Analyze and review other financial ERP software to replace our current Springbrook system. And then the biggest increase for our department is adding another year audit. So we've got three audit years here in the budget, so we increased it forty-five thousand.
I have a question. This applies to finance and city manager. Can you go over and explain for us these sort of breakouts for each department?
Okay, yeah.
Specifically professional services? I mean, that line item I noticed has gone up considerably over three years and is like much larger for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget compared to last year's actuals and I'm just curious what is.
So I was, do you want to talk about city manager, what makes up that line item?
Yeah, like what are professional services?
Okay, professional services.
Page twenty-four and then page twenty-eight.
So for professional services and the city manager's budget this year, we, and this is actually, we had this last year too, it's ten thousand dollar for, for a federal lobbyist, he, we meet with him monthly and he gives us all the updates on what's going on. There is fifteen thousand for general options and I think that's been in the budget for a number of years. The compensation study of eighteen thousand for SEIU is new. Thirty thousand for labor negotiates was not included, it was back when the contract was, the last contract was done, so that's new. And then last year we only had ten thousand for a grant writing consultant, they did a mid-year budget amendment to make it, to take it to fifty thousand, but I took it back to thirty-five hoping we can find an in-house part-time contractor.
I mean, I don't need to like have like every line item, that would be nice to see, but it's, you know, like last year was thirty-six and now it's going to be one seventy-three.
Yeah, so that's, those are like the major increases would be the thirty thousand for the, for SEIU, and some of those that we didn't have in last year, those expenses we did not have, so.
And I assume the same for finance, that goes up considerably as well?
Yeah, that line is a lot of contracts. So the biggest increase there is for the audit, we have eighty-nine thousand eight hundred. So, I mean, we have a breakdown by year, but that's the biggest bulk of that hundred and fourteen thousand.
The audit.
Yeah.
So in your view, are probably, some of the changes are you comparing to actuals, so some of like say the fifteen thousand doesn't, you know, doesn't get spent.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So it's just out there in case.
So it's just budgeted and next year it may be.
Yeah, yeah.
So on page twenty-four, you were talking about decreasing the grant, money that we voted for to have grants. And I think that was Mary, Mary Dingo was pretty clear about it. So whatever the circumstance was, what's the difference between having an in-house grant writer?
Well, we did, they, I, I don't know how this company was found, I think maybe in a conference, did you?
We were in a conference, yeah.
Yeah, and so they, you know, they have a five thousand dollar a month, what they call it, just like a fee for the services. And I have to say, they're the worst company I've ever worked with. They, they did not, the two grants that we applied for, they waited till the last minute to apply for the grant, did not get the, we couldn't give them all the information they needed, so they wrapped it in really slowly. And, you know, and it just, they, and then they, they just sent us emails and saying, look at all these grants, you know, aren't these exciting? But they don't, it's not tailored to our city.
But that is involved your research.
Right, right. And then they never, one of the major things was, the first thing they should have done is met with all the department heads, what kind of grants does this, are you looking for, you know, so that we can tailor our search or, you know, what we're providing to, to what you need. And that was never done, so it just was not the greatest thing. So what I would prefer to have is an in-house person who is just working for the city, knows exactly what kind of grants we should be searching out and is a, an accomplished grant writer, so that they know how that's.
An employee or, I mean, the only ones I see that have really the wherewithal for grant writing were police, fire and possibly planning because there are people out there.
And, and public works.
And public works, so I think it was really a, you know, a specific goal.
Yes.
Because we felt that we were not, you know, we weren't finding.
You know, we didn't take advantage of them and public works is actually.
I mean, actually originally, we just, you know, wanted to find an in-house because in-house staff got familiar with what we need, right? So the, but later on, even than I suggest, when you're searching, you're in a position in the finance department, I said, if it's possible, and this candidate, could we have some experience, ability to do that?
We have.
Yeah, hi, yeah, we discussed each other.
And so the finance division is slightly stacked. There is no time to, to do grant writing. Grant writing, the biggest thing is switching the grant out and, and knowing what kind of grants it needs now. Public Works has some very experienced people with grant writing. The last grant that, that Oriana applied for, she said, could I just do it myself? I really don't want that company to do it. So we know we could get it.
Well, we've never been, but you know, I guess I mentioned the regular fire, police, public works and possibly planning. So I think your goal, I felt, was to like, let's just try this new method. So you found that it wasn't, you know, wasn't, it's not successful.
It's not successful, because they, they.
But we still think we're, I mean, you know, there's.
But we still need a grant writer and that's, and I am searching, I am searching out. So I took it down to thirty-five, you know, I'm, I'm hoping I have a couple of leads on some grant writers.
That work for other cities possibly or?
Well, they're, they would come back as a contractor, a retired, you would possibly, that would come.
That's great, yeah, with a lot of experience, connections.
Yes. Yeah.
And is that an existing consulting company? Have we already canceled the agreement or?
Yes, yes, yeah, so we've.
If any condition for them, when on a follow-up and because we already paid some and can they provide any follow-up information or?
The, the two grants that they did, they're already submitted.
Okay.
So now it's just, the first grant, I'm very certain we're not going to get it.
Okay.
Not enough of the condition provided, so and the second grant, they worked with Wayne on that one and I, I think that we have a much better chance on that one, so.
So I was pleased to see our public works director nodding his head because I know that you have experience in this area, so I'm really excited about that. I mean, we, you know, our mantra is we have no money and no staff, which I think the council sort of, you know, glazes over and it's the absolute truth, but there are different methods. I think that's what Jack tried to bring, some methodology to actually add to that, add to whatever we might be missing. So I'm really, thank you for reporting and thanks for what you did.
Thank you.
If I could follow up on your, your note with regarding a federal lobbyist, did they help you get any money?
They, they're more, they were reporting on what the, the federal government, what programs are out, but they're actually, he's very good. I, I, he's, I mean, for the minimal amount that we pay, I mean, we meet with him once a month and they provide, you know, what's coming down, what the federal government will be providing. And then if you want, if I call him, he'll just give me a lot more information on, you know, where, where it might be available, where, you know, what the city might be able to use, so he's definitely worth it, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
It's tied into some.
Yeah, yeah, all the city managers pay, in the area pay, pay for them, so that, you know, you can get the information, he's really good.
That's good.
Do you think it would be possible in future drafts of this, if we could have like a column of like percentage increases and decreases from the previous years?
Certainly, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great, great suggestion. I have a question for our audit process. My feeling is we audit always put the two years audit together because the last year we go through with CPA firm, they've got in two years. And also, and here we got in two thousand, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, that is two years. Why we put the two years together or is not year by year? And also here I look at in a professional fees, so that that is why increase from the thirty thousand to one hundred fourteen thousand. Is that a reason or can you explain?
Well, you're looking at projected actuals, so.
Yeah.
Last year, we lost our finance, our deputy finance director in August. During the month of July, I was acting city manager and then Liz in November. So we've had some gaps in our professional, former high-level finance people. And then again, I, I was, I took on acting city manager and so we've hired a retired finance director to come in and help us and she's just concentrating on audit scores, so. And we've just worked with her before, so, so once the budget is done, then we're going to be turning back to audits, so.
Liz, you're from Hillsborough, right, originally before?
I am.
Are you familiar with their software they have on their website with budgets and it's weird, yeah?
She implemented, she's very good.
Yeah, is that something, is that something we could do here?
Yeah.
That is the.
So we've got.
We are talking about how to allocate that ARPA funding, we could perhaps add into that.
Yeah, we do have money in the budget for that as well, so, yeah, because hoping to.
Okay, great.
Are you talking about the Open Gov, their, which software?
Yeah, you can like select by types of revenue and expense.
Yes, so that's their Open Gov, their transparency software, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you have to have really good financials and ways to tie into that before.
Was conversion involved?
But that should be the goal, I think it's great, that we could aspire to be like that, you know.
Honestly, I, I think we need to be on a new accounting system first.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We don't have the ability to pull down that data right now at that level and put it out on the web.
Conversion is the worst, that's the worst part of this.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that's definitely our goal, to get that information and have a more updated software.
This software is the one-time investment or month by month or yearly by yearly subscription?
That would be the one-time investment and then there will be in future years, there will, yeah.
Agreed, okay.
You'll be tired, so the next one is just the city attorney budget and. And mainly what I'm going to talk about is the code enforcement, city prosecutor and the Sonoma Valley Youth and Family Services and that's Bob Smith. And for this year, he actually has reduced his contract to sixty thousand. He will not be doing what he calls the minor code enforcement. That makes everybody crazy. But we do have some other ways to, to backfill that kind of code enforcement. Could you, and you could share that with us? Backway, yeah, well, actually I'm going to let Lisa, because she's, she's working with a group who will be providing that lower level kind of code enforcement. So, but he will still be doing, he does just a minimal amount of city prosecutor and then the youth and family services, which is a great program, that still is, is sixty-five thousand, it's, it's fifty percent funded by the sheriff's department, so it really only costs us thirty-two thousand five hundred.
So, I'm sorry, so Lisa will, what?
She's going to tell us about the code enforcement, the lower level code enforcement, because we actually are there.
And now, all the letters that come to me, sales and cars on tap, are you doing cars on tap?
We've dealt with that, yeah, we've got, we've got that down.
Under control, yeah.
We've got that under control, everybody's touched that one, so. So for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, so he created a five oh one three for C for the Sonoma Valley Youth and Family Services to support fundraising for additional services. Raised sixty thousand in grants and participating in the community foundation three-year program to develop sustainability and capacity. An executive director to manage the programs, fundraise and develop partnerships with other nonprofits, increased hours for this Sonoma Valley Youth Family Service caseworker. Established a primary juvenile services partner of Hannah's initiative to become a hub for the, oh, they're, they want to become the hub for providing valley-wide mental health services and that is, that's part of that grant thing that they're requesting. Incorporated unique interactive programming to help juveniles understand the value of inclusion and successfully and positively identifying, interrupting and resolving implied bias. He continued with the pro, the ten-week course to parents of obedient defiant, obedient defiant children, both in English and Spanish. I'm not much sure what that means. Continued to adapt to the unforeseen course of COVID in its variants. Their online programs were a great support for our participants. They had fifty-four students successfully complete their contracts remotely. And the experience of distance learning and period isolation on juveniles has been really traumatic. We are, so they're working on an MOU with the district to become an alternative to standard discipline protocols of suspension and expulsion. So for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the SFEYFS continues to look forward to another year preparing even better equipped support for our local families, school district and youth to foster healthy boundaries, loving engagement and respect for oneself and the community. He's working with the school district on providing an alternative to discipline, which greatly increases a juvenile, juvenile's likelihood of. I guess, oh, they have a ropes course and they want to complete that for this year and continue to support a partnership with Hannah Teen Services, mentoring boys and girls club and one other one to establish some of the programs for juveniles. And then for code enforcement, oh, okay, who talks about the changes? The city began contracting, contracting with the city prosecutor for code enforcement in March of two thousand sixteen. The part-time code enforcement officer is supported by an attorney supervisor and an office administrator. In addition to responding to citizens and staff inquiries, the code enforcement officer investigates and documents findings, prepares evidence, controls for violations and works to educate the community on municipal code provisions. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, the code enforcement officer will focus on property matters, including use of public properties, parklets, et cetera, twenty-four seven phone access with response next business day, all necessary steps to obtain compliance from investigation, preliminary notices, formal notices, hearings, appeals, superior court trials and collections. So the city prosecutor and the code enforcement will be merged for proposed annual cost not to exceed sixty thousand. And so this reduces the annual cost of the code enforcement city prosecutor by thirty-seven thousand four hundred. So, so the goals for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, work with the community for compliance through education and dialogue, revise identified city ordinances to reflect current qualities of life issues, continue annual inspections of tobacco and then newly cannabis retailers, remain vigilant as short-term rentals are starting to emerge from COVID-19 shutdowns, utilize superior court actions for moving administrative awards to reportable property lanes, focus on property-related issues. Focus on property-related issues, including parklets. Increase communication and coordination with city departments. So the major thing is the reduction in thirty-seven four hundred for that code enforcement.
I have, I have a question. Every year and, um, uh, fire sends out notices for weed abatement and everything. And I'm sorry, I'm not, I forget the schedule could be made, then they give them thirty days. Because it looks like it's happening again, it's probably a cycle and people just don't get to it, other than Lenzen. He really does a good job of all his properties. So I guess I'm, I'm not clear on what that might be. And so, and, and I know that Steve knows and has shared it with me and I've forgotten.
So what a matter that's done through, I think that's done through the, and I don't really know. I probably shouldn't answer.
Yeah, how does that work together with code?
I worked for a fire district, so it was all done through the fire district.
Because I mean, I think it's probably.
And they could put liens on property for, um, uh, and so I think that's handled through the fire, um, fire district. So I think the, um, city code enforcement officer really has anything to do with that.
Okay, well, because I, you know, it seems to lag, it's starting to look that way again. So I just, you know, I'm just mentioning that, so to find out what the schedule might be. And they may have already sent out letters in April, I don't know, but I think they'd wait a certain amount of time and then if people don't comply, I, I don't know what they do.
Right, well, I know that they can, they'll, they'll go in and do, do it in charge, and in charge of the, um, client room.
Do it in charge of.
And then they can put a lien on the property, so.
I'd just like, you know, the council to know what the, that, that's.
Sure, and so, oh, if Steve does have come, well, um, I'll ask him.
Okay, thanks.
Can you explain again why we're reducing funding for code enforcement?
Well, we're not really reducing it, we're, um, transitioning it to a different, um, so the low-level dogs, um.
Smoking.
Smoking, those kinds of things that.
Pedal vendors, the vendors that are pedaling in their carts are all going to go into the community activities, but.
Yeah, so, um, it just, I mean.
We'll talk about it then, okay.
Yes, we will definitely talk about it then. And the, the, um, the main thing is that, is that Bob, I mean, that wasn't, is, when really wanted to do, so.
Okay. And then, um, it'd be interesting to know what percentage of these fifty-four students has successfully completed youth and family services. Do we know what percentage of them are from our city residents?
Um, I, I can get that information from him, um.
Because I guess my, I'm just curious why the county isn't also, I mean, I know it's the sheriff's office, but why are, why is the county not also participating in this when it comes to funding?
I think we do provide a funding.
The sheriff's, the actual.
The sheriff does provide the funding, and I think that.
Yeah, so that's under our sheriff's budget that we provide the funding for youth and family services.
And, yeah, so it's half and half, so the city provides half.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just curious if it's half, half.
Yeah, and then I don't know, he probably does have statistics on it, where they're from.
Yeah.
I, I would imagine they come mostly from the high school, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so it, it, I mean, you know, would be within the, the city limit or the school limit, uh, uh, boundary, so, but we could, I'm sure he has that information.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Does, does, um, the code enforcement include, um, I mean, I found a lot of, um, emails regarding the, the trails, the overlook trail and other trails and, and fires on them, like people camping up there and things like, of that nature. Um, is that part of the, um, what would be in this bucket or the new bucket or?
Well, that, and some of that I think is fire, actually. Yes, yeah.
Some of it might be fire, or some of it may be fear of fire.
Right. Correct.
Um, but it, it, um, at least it was anecdotally reported to me that there seems to be less oversight than in previous years and wondering, you know, although there's more people actually, you know, up on the trail doing things that, you know, are not appropriate for the trail.
Yes.
Um, so I'm just wondering, you know, where that falls, so I can answer that question.
Right, well, actually, there was just a question, um, from, um, uh, about a lot of that fire and, um, and Steve addressed it, actually, I can forward it to you, but his response.
Okay, sorry.
Um, yeah, it's, you know, it's, I mean, I, I, it's, it sounds like, you know, same emails are going to different council people. The only emails that I see, they go to, they go to all council, I, I see them, but, um, you know, so, but I, we do, I think Steve did quite a response on that one, so.
That would be great to know.
Yes.
It sounds like there's a move, I think when you were involved in some of that correspondence, like, were you the one that suggested possibly the ecology center helping or someone else?
That was Steve, that was Steve, yeah.
That was Steve Baker, huh?
Steve, okay, so. Because I, um, I think there.
I, I can, I can forward that to all city councils and then, um, and then you can all see what the response was. It was pretty detailed in the, in the one doc, the different things that could be done, so.
Uh, some of the residents have told me, some of the neighbors, they rented a room. For that is ALPMB, so if any, you know, enforcement or the volunteer reports, how we, you know.
That is definitely code enforcement and that is something that Bob does, um, respond to. So, um, if that's, if we're notified of it, then, then he does, you know. But we actually, I mean, he does, he does a pretty good job of that. So once we're notified that it was in the legal, um, you know, vacation rental, um, be watched right on.
And I think, don't we have a company that looks at that or no?
No, no, um.
Because they usually look all the ads and things.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so next we're to the police department.
Here, good afternoon, everyone, thank you for having us. Um, uh, we've, uh, out scaled a little bit at the police department. I know we took a big, uh, hit back before COVID. Uh, we've reduced some of our, uh, employees, uh, but now we've, uh, we're kind of back to staff where we need to be. Um, hopefully we can move forward from now. Um, our accomplishments last year is, uh, you know, again, we try to be, uh, provide quality of service and fiscal accountability. Uh, provide significant outreach and education to continue to build public trust. Uh, work with our business partners to promote safe parklets, dining areas to help with the COVID-nineteen economic effects. Uh, we collaborated a lot with Sonoma Overnight Support and the Fields of Dream Directors to provide safe environments over community. We did acquire a new police motorcycle, uh, which we are, we are excited to go out there and hopefully we, uh, will make more of a presence out there in the community. Uh, partnered with the Sonoma County Deputy Sheriff's Association and the Turkey Giveaway, where we donated turkeys to needy families during Thanksgiving and we also did that, uh, during the toy drive. Um, attended several school commu- school and community events. Uh, we did provide gang recognition training to the Sonoma Unified School District Administration. And, uh, we hired two new community service officers. Uh, for next year's goals, uh, what we want to do is continue to provide high quality of service and of course fiscal accountability, um, add a community-oriented policing and problem-solving deputy, uh, which hopefully will get some of your questions answered about who do we go to. Uh, this is probably the person that you're going to want to get to know very well. Uh, research additional grant opportunities consistent with our mission. Uh, currently, we are looking at a grant to hopefully, uh, see if we qualify to provide a new SRO to, to the schools, but, uh, we'll see how that grant goes. I know they have a lot of requirements. And normally those grants we do ourselves. I know that Bob is going to be, uh, looking at it and reviewing it and he's probably going to be writing most of it, but we'll provide him with the information that he needs and the past grants, like the tobacco grant. Because a lot of the demographics are already included in that, so we've got all that research done. Um, so we'll be looking at that. Um, again, uh, continue to build relationships with our community leaders, churches, schools and clubs. Uh, again, uh, we are going to try to continue coffee with the cops so they can get to meet our new police officers and our community service, uh, officers that we just hired. Uh, provide training, uh, responsible beverages service and training, so that way our bartenders understand the importance of serving alcohol to our community. Uh, recruit and select and train new volunteers in policing services and start our Explorer Scouters. Uh, one of the things that I'm really pushing for this year is to, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, get a community-oriented policing and problem-solving deputy, which would be dedicated to the community. So the question you asked about Montini, everything usually rolls back, usually to public safety, right? Is there a fire? Well, we're going to go with fire. Is it fire season right now? Probably not. But in a month, that might change, so we'll probably, this officer or this deputy would go up there with fire and fire would say, yeah, we deem this, uh, you know, fire season and it's, you know, it's not good for somebody to be out here camping. So then that deputy would work with fire, with SOS, so we could provide services that, uh, people living up there are homeless. Uh, and then provide services. Um, this deputy would also work with Lisa Jansen, who, you know, dogs in the parks, uh, the smoking. So we would have a deputy present at community events or Tuesday night market, work with state parks, so they can work with Casa Grande. So we can keep, uh, you know, to inform and educate, number one, about not having dogs in the park and number two, about our smoking ordinance. Uh, I think those are the biggest two issues that she faces most of the time.
Or you're going to have to start arming her. It's rough out there, you say, no dogs.
Yes. Um, also this, uh, uh, this extra deputy that we call because he would have the time. So we get complaints about traffic enforcement in certain locations at certain times. So when we do send our traffic officer to go out there, since if he gets called to us, to, uh, call for service, he has to leave. And usually a call for service will take anywhere, could be fifteen minutes, it could be an hour or two hours. So by the time he gets back, maybe he misses the complaint time, right? So with this community-oriented policing officer, he could take the place of the traffic officer. The traffic officer can go, monitor the street for an hour, two hours or three hours where people are complaining, while the COP officer is handling all his calls for service and now he can really concentrate in that area. So there's, we can utilize this deputy for a lot of things. Um, he would partner with each of you, uh, when you get those emails or those complaints, uh, he would partner with you and try to resolve the issues, partner with Lisa, partner with SOS, with Kathy King. Um, uh, and also with the county, uh, also with the school, right? So that doesn't mean that he's going to go to the school and stay at the school. He will do his routine checks maybe once a week to see how he can help youth and family services, provide services to the, the kids that need to be referred to youth and family services. And one of the things that we were going to put together, uh, working with SOS, is when, um, these, uh, children get referred to, uh, um, to youth and family services. One of the things we were going to do is, while they're going through the program, was they get to meet the chief, uh, they get to get a tour of the police department and then if they successfully complete the program, they get to go on a ride-along, so they can understand what we do. And I think that would be build more trust with us and the community and the parents. So now when they go back to school, they have a different view of what we do, uh, that we're just not out there to go respond. So, um, I think that this deputy would be beneficial to the city and really, uh, uh, answer a lot of the questions that you're asking, who takes care of this? He would be the one that would, that would be helping you with that. Might, we might not resolve nine, a hundred percent of the problems, but we'll at least we'll try to come up to a solution.
Or I know that, that's part of the shoot, your sheriff's contract in budget?
No.
No, no, this is additional.
It's actually within salaries, the sheriff, um.
The sheriff will link, uh, will, uh, the cost of the deputy, the city will pick up sixty-six percent of the cost and the sheriff's office is, uh, is picking up thirty-three percent of the cost plus the vehicle costs and also benefits. So, uh, I think it's a win-win for all, uh, because, you know, especially if we're dealing with, S, working with SOS and a lot of our house, uh, committee members usually come from, either they leave the city, go to the county or go from the county or in the valley and come into the city, so it's vice versa. So this way he can work with both our valley, our, our city, and same thing with the school, right? They can work with our high school or the other elementary schools in our valley. So he's just going to be dedicated to us, to our valley, to our city, and nowhere else.
It's in the budget and a couple of items.
Yes, it's our.
Yes. Yes, and I think our budget compared to last year is going to increase to about five percent. Councilman DeKalso asked about that, so it's about a five percent increase.
I have a question for store resource officer. Because I believe the, we last year, actually, you, the one and a half year ago, when we discussed, other than the city postponed, we didn't say that we don't need it too high, but I'm not sure, and the recent, did you, you know, contact with the school district? Because I read a newspaper and the parents and the teachers and students very concerned. They are looking for, you know, more protection, more.
Yes, yeah, so that's why we're working on a, uh, hopefully we can get a grant to fund an additional position for an SRO. But again, uh, when we're looking at this grant, we have to study to see what the recommendations are or what the requirements are. And the requirements usually are that the city wants to, has to be a partner, the school has to, uh, be a partner and the sheriff's has to be a partner. And then there has to be a, uh, MOU or, you know, understanding that we're both, there are all three of us have to work together and agree to that. So once we look up to see what this grant requires, uh, we have to contact each entity and see if they're willing to work with us.
Yeah, my concern is that because application for the grant is not uncertainty. So the, you know, we can, you know, see the balance, if really, really that is necessity, maybe we can consider. But that is really an issue.
Well, we did, we did meet with the superintendent.
Okay.
And at this time, um, they're, they, they weren't particularly interested in moving, they were really excited about this community servicing officer, that somebody could come by, you know, and be available. Uh, but the, right now, the school district, um, was not interested in that position. And they, obviously, they don't, they weren't, I mean, they, right now, they don't have the funding either. But, you know, you sit down the road, could be a possibility, but, um, uh, that was something that, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I am in contact with the superintendent. Um, you know, and he does make me aware where certain things are going to happen, if there's going to be a protest or, or there's going to be students walking out. He does make me aware of those things and we, we do provide him with the services that we can. So I think even with this, uh, his, uh, when we described to him this community-oriented policing deputy, he, he really appreciated that he would be available to go up there and then maybe provide that safety, you know, the protection or, or just being up there in certain days at the high school and being a presence. Usually that's, uh, maybe would put people at ease that were there. And, you know, sometimes after, you know, we've had incidents in the past before COVID where people, uh, you know, there was a fight at school or something that, that they felt that they were threatened and then we provide, you know, extra patrol and the parents were very appreciative of that and really thanked us for just being out there and looking out for them. So I think having this COP, uh, community-oriented policing deputy out there, uh, and making his rounds once a week, uh, he knows when he needs to be there and when he doesn't, so.
That's, that's great, thank you, yeah, you did fantastic, thank you so much.
If, if the new deputy is approved, um, how soon would he or she be hired and started?
Well, that, that all depends on our staffing at the main office, uh, you know, uh, everybody at the police department, every police department, every, uh, law enforcement agency is, is suffering through, uh, hiring right now. So we are at minimums right now at the main office. Uh, we have everybody staffed here at the police department and at Windsor Police. I think Windsor Police is working one short because we don't have enough people to staff their, their police department. So I think they're working one short, but it's a, it's an injury, so they have to hold it for thirty days. Um, so at this point, I can't say, I know we have, I, I go look at our personnel department and look, look to see how many backgrounds are working on deputy sheriffs and their boards are full, so they're, they're working each. I think they have five investigators and each one has at least twelve people that they're working backgrounds on. And usually about, from working in personnel, uh, out of the twelve, we'll probably hire, you know, each, each one, working twelve, out of those twelve, we'll probably hire three or four, because the rest won't pass background for some reason. So it, it's pretty difficult to, to get a job in law enforcement, especially with all, all the, uh, the, the state's putting a lot of things that we need to cover, you know, more testing and then, uh, it's just getting harder to, to find qualified candidates.
Do you have, uh, do you have the timeframe to hire deputy chief officer, when?
This is possible.
Mm-hmm.
If it's approved.
I'm hoping within the first, as soon as, if you approve this, July first, um, because that's when the fiscal year starts. If, but I'll know more once we get to July first, hopefully it's within the first thirty days. But, um, uh, you know, that's our busy season.
Yes, but if like this way, we may change out of the budget to four. Because according to, and. Because according to page number 35, and in the fiscal year, the 2021 to 2022, we already put this in a position, all out of budget already. Page 35 and the second line, you have 21 to 2022.
That's a community service officer. So we were, we were, we reduced one CSO for, I believe, 21, 22. And then we only had one and then we were gonna obtain a second one in January. So that was.
Oh, January.
Yeah, January of '22. So we held off from July to January so we can have more savings during that time. So what happened is one of our CSOs, that's why one CSO got restored in January. So.
Actually, here is not, here is two positions.
Yes.
We read it. Restore the vacant deputy, restore CSO.
Yes, so we, we, we funded for two CSOs for '21, '22, but we held on on hiring the second one till January for to save us six months' cost savings. So in January, we went ahead and hired the second one.
But whatever, because, you know, when we hired, we just paid or only on the budget. But here, you know, looks like, it's not a big issue, yeah, just a number issue, you know, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it looks like we had two.
Yes.
But we only had one and then in January, we got the second one. Yeah, so it, it's, so you didn't have to pay for that half year until we actually hired them and they started. So there was that cost savings that we agreed on.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. And I hope I'm not out of sync here. I don't want you to lose your rhythm, chief. But, you know, every year they have Drug Takeback Day, and I know we just passed it. So I know you used to have a receptacle. I don't know if you still do. If you do, we didn't advertise it. I don't know about Vintage House, they used to take it. So I don't know. What's the status of that? You know, 40% plus of people who live in Sonoma are seniors, so obviously, you know. And they tell you, no garbage, don't throw up the garbage and don't go down the drain, so.
We can definitely post that on the city website and of course on the, on the police website. But we do still have the receptacle.
You do?
Oh, yes. And about 20% of our daily traffic is somebody dropping off old prescription drugs.
So maybe Sarah Tracy might be able to put that out to the city periodically. Because, you know, like I said, I've been, the drug takeback, you know, we passed that and that would have been great to advertise and people could have come back, you know, come in and do it. But I appreciate, I'm glad to know that. So I appreciate knowing that that's still there because I think it's important.
Yep, every, twice a week, they come for a pickup and it's a big box.
Oh, great.
So yeah, I think it's, it's very well known that we have that, but we'll, we'll definitely put that up there for advertising again.
So you'll, somebody will pass that on to you. Thank you. Thanks, okay?
Thank you.
And so just in time, we got hired.
Hi, everyone. Apologies for being late. We're in the middle of doing our community-driven strategic plan. So we've been, we've been at it for three days and we have one more day tomorrow. So thank you for allowing me to be here.
So I'm gonna mention one thing. We have to break at 5:30, so don't rush, everybody. Sorry. You served some of your time.
Nope, not at all.
Go ahead. That's great.
Okay, so for the fire department this year, there is not a lot of, we're not really proposing any real changes in, in either service level, positions, anything like that. It's pretty much status quo for us. We did, to highlight a couple of things this last year that we were able to do, we did, we did hire another prevention position using just existing funds. And that person, Gary Johnson, he's a captain. He's working with Chief Rodriguez and with the Homeless Task Force to address some of the issues. I know there's been some real concern about the fuels management and re-debatement, fires from homeless activity, especially right behind us here, Montini and Overlook. So he's leading that effort. He's also leading our department's efforts in fuels management. Our fire board, two months ago, enacted a policy change, giving us policy direction to move into prescribed burning. So it's not something that we'll do on our own, but we'll do it with well-established community partners such as the Ecology Center, the Land Trust, Audubon Canyon, and another group called Fire Forward. So those are a couple of the big things. We also, last year, a highlight was we had moved Gary before we put him in that full-time position. We had him on a temporary assignment. And he went and, as part of the business reopening with COVID, he went and inspected every single business within the city limits to assist the, to assist business owners in reopening as well as ensuring safety of the community members who are now going to be revisiting reopened businesses. So that was really, really successful. So a lot of, a lot of efforts right now focusing on prevention. And let's see. I guess a couple other accomplishments and then I'll get into goals and then a couple of elements of the, of the contract for this year. Couple other big goals that we accomplished was we were, the district was awarded a county open space grant for a chipper program. So that's something that we, we now have up and running. And we've deployed it here so far this season in the Grove Street area. And that was one of the things that we've talked about as a, as an asset that we can use if we are successful with being able to mitigate, to trim some of the trees and fuels on city property. That chipper is absolutely available to, to help once things are limbed up. Let's see. We just took a delivery of two new fire engines, one for the Agu Caliente Station and one for the Glen Ellen Station. That brings our fleet up. Now our oldest frontline engine is six years old. So really proud of that effort that the district and board has made to keep our capital equipment in good condition and keeping up with technologies and whatnot. I think I may have shared this at a previous meeting, but one of the things that our new engines have and we've outfitted our old and older engines as well as our ambulances with is what's called a Haas Alert device. It's a little transponder that, that connects to Waze. So if, if you're a Waze user and you have your app open or your car has like OnStar or one of the other services that, that connects to Waze, the, the Haas Alert will notify the Waze users when an emergency vehicle is approaching. So we limit, try to, try to limit those exposures, you know, intersections when our emergency vehicles are going code three are always very dangerous for not only us, but the community as well. So we're trying to keep up as best we can with new and emerging technologies to keep everybody safe, so. With that, some of our goals this year are to continue to expand the fuels management and defensible space. We're about, we're partnering with the county again on doing vegetation management inspections that are going to start here in about two weeks.
I asked earlier and I forgot that you were going to be, because I know you have a system.
We do.
And I don't know if other council members know that there's a system.
So we absolutely do and thank you. That's a, you know, this is a great time of year for that reminder. We do have an annual weed abatement program where we send out notices to vacant property, owners of vacant property and lots that in the past we've had complaints on. We also have, through our website, we have the opportunity for any member of the public to report a weed or hazard complaint. And that's, that's been very, very successful and a lot of, a lot of the community has utilized that, that opportunity.
I'm sorry, and does that include residential homes?
Yes.
I have got it as to five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course. So we're, we're looking to expand our fuels management. We're, we're actively seeking grants and partnering on prescribed burn later this month on the Van Hoosier Wildflower Preserve. And we're looking to do another one with the Sonoma Land Trust in, in Glen Ellen, probably in the fall.
No, I'm sorry. When you're talking about prevention, Kelso and I, we've forgotten that bill that they mentioned about the, I don't remember, SB 854 or 5, you know, 584, but I don't remember your, I was hoping you'd be more detailed. But it has to do with, with what you're talking about with respect to prevention, especially even the cemetery with, when there's trees and things like that. But I've sort of forgotten, you know, I'll have to search. But if anybody knows what I'm rambling about, I know that it was something that was passed and it sort of piqued our interest when we heard it.
Like state grant funding for, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were actively seeking state grant funds, PG&E grant funds, county grant funds, and anything else that we can do to, to expand that program. Yeah. Let's see, a couple other things. We're, you know, actively involved in the planning process for the Sonoma Developmental Center. I know that that's an important one for all of us in, in the community and happy to be able to be as involved as we are with, with that process. And then continuing our outreach and engagement with emergency preparedness, we, we just partnered with the Department of Emergency Management last weekend and did a SOCO alert exercise in Springs and Glen Ellen area. Very successful. And then we're doing a second community evacuation drill next month in the Grove, Grove Street Diamond A area. So that'll be the second one that we've done in, in the valley here since 2017. It's a great, great opportunity to exercise the alert system as well as to get people used to actually grabbing a go-bag and being able to practice an evacuation, so. And we'll continue to, to partner with the sheriff's department and DEM on, on those kind of initiatives. Next, so the budget that we're proposing for this year for fire does have an increase largely due to, we have a tentative agreement with the labor groups for a cost of living increase that, that is the majority of the increased costs. Obviously, personnel are our biggest expense and like somewhere around 85% of our budget is, is personnel. So that's, that's the biggest increase in costs. We do have ongoing increases in workers' compensation as well as property and general liability insurance. And, and those are across the board. Those aren't things that are unique to fire necessarily, but we're, we're seeing the same impacts that, you know, the city's seen, seen similar increases. And then, and then there's a few additions that are basically restoring line items that had, that we had cut, we had made one time, some pretty drastic one-time cuts during the, during that first COVID budget. And last year, we, we put, we restored about half of those. And then this year, we're, we're asking to restore the rest of them. And those are in things such as training, fire and EMS equipment, and personal protective clothing. And then there has been a slight increase as well in our Redcom dispatch fees. And those fees are proportionate based on call volume within, within the city and other jurisdictions. So overall, the, the budget, we're proposing, the cost of the contract is increased by 6% this year. And again, due to largely the labor, the labor agreements as well as restoration of COVID cuts. And with that, I think I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about the SAFER grant program.
Thank you.
So this is the last year of that?
Yeah.
Do you anticipate requesting extending that next year?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. So that, that is one of the key initiatives that we'll be looking, we were already planning for. We are, again, our SAFER grant, when we, when we wrote the first SAFER grant, we were awarded 12 positions. Nine were funded by the district and then three by the city. Through our consolidation, we've been able to secure permanent funding for the nine district positions. And so we think that in January, we'll have the opportunity to apply again for the SAFER on behalf of the city. And we're cautiously optimistic and hopeful that we'll be competitive with that. Because I think what we'll be able to show is, as a service provider, we asked for 12 and we've been able to secure permanent funding for nine. And because of COVID and other considerations, you know, big impacts to the city, we need, we need that grant extended for another three-year period.
That sounds, that sounds great. Years ago, they had the cops bill. They hired all the police and then there was no more money and they had to let them go. So this is wonderful. This is really great.
Thank you. We'll do our best, for sure.
So, I, I'm, so, do you have, so, you know, people always, I mean, there's been an effort to have volunteers helping in some way. Maybe they can pass out go-bags, I don't know. But, but, you know, residents ask me all the time and I guess there used to be people who actually volunteered, not through EOC or other, whatever system was set up here in the city of Sonoma. But it just, there seems to be, you know, people that keep approaching me and ask, what can we do to help, you know? So I don't know what that might mean for you and Chief Rodriguez, but, you know, they're just, I'm just saying people are out there and they're willing to do something and I don't know what that means.
Thank you. So to answer your question directly, the Community Center has been our hub for volunteers, for community-based volunteers. But if I can, I'd like to expand on that just a little bit. Very proud of the evidence of the community and the willingness to volunteer. We just, we're, we're about to complete a new volunteer firefighter training academy, a three-month academy with eight new community volunteers for the fire department. So volunteerism is definitely alive and well.
So what about a 72-year-old woman who could just answer phones or hand out go-bags? So there, anything, not me, I'm far older than that. But what, they, so these are the kind of people that want to be helpful in some way and I don't know if they'll be able to do the firefighting.
No, but I think the, again, the Community Center is, is where we, is kind of the hub of any of those interested community members.
And I'll talk to Charlotte.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
I was up in Glen Ellen during that training, or it just so happened, I didn't realize it was gonna be there. It was really impressive to see all the crews up there going through all that training on the, on the grounds there. And so was really happy to see that. And also just because you mentioned the SDC and I've just been so immersed in that, that there's one of the oldest firehouses, I think, in the country is, is the Eldridge, that old firehouse that's on the brick side of the.
Yeah, the kind of gingerbread looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's, it's just really, I just wanted to note it that it's something that also needs to be preserved as a historical monument as well as being so important to the areas.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Also, yeah, you mentioned the prevention is very important.
Also, yeah, you mentioned that prevention is very important, and also if we can do more than education, community education, that'd be wonderful. For example, some households and the dry grass in the front yard, in the backyard, or give them, you know, reminder or if any, I'm not sure, do we have this kind of pistols or the checket or neighborhood? And the major, and the, not HOA, HOA usually, you know, usually, not a lot of open space. So just to remind the people, flyers.
Yep. We're putting out a lot of information on social media, and our website has a lot of information about defensible space and making sure that homes are safe. And we've, we've got two new community signboards that are out in front of the Aguacoliente and Glen Ellen stations. And those, we do a lot of community advertising on that in terms of preparedness and fire safety and events that are coming up. So, yeah, it is, it's very important to outreach. We've also got our scope program, which is active again after kind of taking a COVID break, not being able to really interact with the, with community much, but they're back up and running. We've got a lot of requests from community groups and neighborhoods to put on our preparedness classes as well.
Great. And also thank your support, our nonprofit for July fourth fireworks. Safety is priority.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you did wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Welcome.
Next round of Public Works and Michael Brother.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, and thanks for letting me present today on the Public Works Department's budget. Because I got here at the eleventh hour of assembling the budget, I brought along an excellent support crew today to take the lead effort. They were the ones that compiled all the data and have the narratives and put all that together, and they have a lot more information, knowledge on it than I do. But I have been busy in the short time I've been here, and just to give you an update on what I've been working on since I got here, you know, definitely working with my staff and working with the city manager's office, different departments here to try to really jump in and get my finger on the pulse of what's happening here at the city and how it affects our department, Public Works. Some of the different areas I've been looking into that I've been spending time on, and what, basically what I'm doing is I'm doing a dive-in and taking a look at all the different programs that we have and try to determine where it's the best for me to put my resources as quickly as possible to make, make an impact and an effect. And some of the areas I've been working on and focusing in, talking to other employees in Public Works, the cemetery program or water program, other infrastructure including bridges and storm drains, asset management, safety, key and critical first and foremost to always make sure that the employees are out there working and they have the ability to do all that work safely. And we're providing them the resource with how to get that done. Also, the development project process, that's, it can always, it can always improve, no matter what municipality you're in, it can flow smoother. And just working with the different departments here at the city on intake, how we review the projects, and then also oversight on construction. And then our CAP program too, making sure that I got my finger on the pulse of that because any construction contract that's under construction is, it's always a spot where there's risk, and you want to make sure that you're on top of that and doing all the proper procedures to ensure the best chance of success on that project. Additionally, taking away from everything that I've learned up until now, there's always areas where there's a lot of overlap. I already mentioned a couple of them, our CAP program, our development process and all the projects, but then also impacts due to COVID. This is something that affected everybody in the entire state, not just the city of Sonoma and Napa over the last couple of years. And then all the other areas where we can make an effect, like improving the flow of traffic, making sure that there's adequate safety measures out there for the traveling public. We're here today to present right off the bat on three different expenditure categories, Public Works Administration and Stormwater, our Streets budget, and Public Works Parks budget. And then a little later, we will do the non-departmental portion. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to two people that came here with me today, Chris Pegg and Oriana Hart, and let them take it away.
I'm going to start with our Admin and Stormwater budget and then pass it on to our Operation Manager. So some of our accomplishments in the Admin and Stormwater piece of our program this last year was to continue to provide Public Works operation and maintenance services through the coronavirus and continued endemic. Public Works staffing, we recruited for and filled the vacant positions for our Public Works Director, our Public Works Manager, Environmental Compliance Analyst position, and our Administrative Assistant position. We continued our Stormwater Discharge Permit Compliance activities, including Development Services Review, Inspection, Public Education, Spill Response, and Water Quality. We secured a grant to do some of our Stormwater services and funded the conceptual design for a trash capture device on Leboni and Broadway that's going to meet some of our state requirements in our Stormwater permit. That grant funding also helped do some restoration for our Creek Project and kick off Stormwater Outreach Program. In our Engineering Services, we've continued to provide Development Services through our on-call services with Mo Engineering and GHD, inspected our Development Services, did C's encroachment permits. We've responded to requests for outside service area connections in the city's water system and responded to requests for lot line adjustments, lot mergers, and deferred improvement agreements through our on-call city engineer services. For next year, we would like to continue to Sonoma citizens, continue to serve Sonoma citizens by maintaining, operating, and improving the city's infrastructure. We definitely want to onboard all of our new staff and provide cross-training with different departments. One of the things that we really are working on that Michael was talking about is our development process, so we'd like to really get that process nailed out, and a lot of that will tie in with our online permitting system that's coming online, but really getting the flow and integration with the other departments worked out. And then we'd like to move forward with applying for additional grant funding to fund our Stormwater Program. The major addition in this budget is an increase of thirty thousand dollars to have a consultant look at our Injury Illness Prevention Plan, that Mike brought us.
That being the first category that we're talking about, do we want to take any questions right now on that?
I have one question on the breakout here, cost recovery. Sort of like fell off the cliff, I'm just curious why.
Yeah, so that's, it's a pass-through for our Development Services, so if somebody comes in with improvement plans, they sign it at cost agreement and it gets charged here, but then we build them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You see the bill come in, but we're actually having to budget them out because.
It's not really an expense, right?
It's not really an expense, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
How about to sidewalks, you know, those kind of like cheese, you know, pumped it up, especially in the behind the, in the high school.
Yes, I know, we have a couple of programs there, I'm going to let Chris tackle that, but I know it's also in our capital improvement projects, and Mike has some thoughts on how we're going to restructure that program.
Because by the city, you know, regulation, homeowners should take full responsibility. But I, I think if not possible, if financially we are okay, maybe we can work with them, see what's going on because really, really it's dangerous.
It is, and forecasting to the next meeting we're having, when we talk about our CAPs, we're going to propose that in addition to working with the company that, on Mike's water bottle there, that does our like leveling of the sidewalk lips that are within the tolerance, we have a assistance program where we offer a financial contribution to homeowners who want to do that, so like a match.
What is the inches?
It's a half inch, it's a half inch, right? That they can shave, and then over that, it becomes an issue that we have to write a letter to the homeowner and have them fix it, but we do have financial money to offer them as well.
So I can actually speak to this in a little more detail in the next budget. Any other questions for Admin and Public Works? Okay. So our Streets Maintenance Program maintains the city's roads, bridges, sidewalks, bike paths, and storm drains. And we also take on a couple of other special activities, and one of those is administration of the Sidewalk Pre-Paz and Repair Program that was put into place in 2013. We also respond to illegal dumping, and we also, of course, operate Streets Sweeping Program. Some of our major accomplish, in addition to the general maintenance that we do over the last fiscal year, including extinguishing a backlog of utility trench cuts that needed to be repaved, entirely caught up, and we now correct all of the permanent paving repairs within seven to ten days of the utility work being completed. We improved the nighttime visibility of key road signs by replacing two hundred and twenty-five lower retro-reflectivity road signs with diamond-grade high-retro-reflectivity road signs. We extended the useful life of asphalt paving on city streets by sealing cracks with an adhesive sealant to prevent moisture intrusion into the road base. We coordinated and implemented Storm Preparedness Response and Recovery for a historic rainfall event on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Kudos to Steve's team for helping out with a lot of that. We rehabilitated the pedestrian and vehicle guardrails on the Chase Street Bridge. We repaved sections of the Friar Creek Bike Path that were damaged by roots, and we installed root barriers to prevent any further pavement damage. We reduced fire hazards through participation in joint vegetation management activities along Cypress Drive in coordination with the Parks and Cemetery Division. So Cypress Drive is a road that goes through the mountain cemetery. We also reduced fire fuels on city properties and along city roadway through mowing and other mechanical methods of vegetation management, consistent with our IDM policy, we didn't use any glyphosate. Applied, we applied select thermoplastic pavement markings to finalize the Broadway restriping plan. We coordinate repair and coordinated repair and replacement of damaged or burnt-out streetlights, maintained curb markings and signs for loading zones, no-stopping zones, and restricted parking areas. And some of our goals for the upcoming fiscal year include improving our Streets Sweeping Program by rescheduling some of the Streets Sweeping activities in select neighborhoods where we've identified a conflict between our Streets Sweeping schedule and Sonoma Garbage Collector's Solid Waste Collection schedule. We're looking to improve our enforcement and abatement when illegal dumping occurs on city streets and sidewalks. We have a goal to improve pedestrian safety through optimized administration of the sidewalks. The city's sidewalk pre-paz and repair policy, and that includes an administration of a cost share program that is accounted for in our current policy. And just, it includes a budget from the general fund that gets adopted on an annual basis. So the other goals include updating the city's pavement management plan, so they grant-funded biennial activity, and prepare a five-year paving plan, securing environmental permits for vegetation management and drainage ways to reduce flood hazards, and continuing to improve nighttime vehicle and pedestrian safety on city streets through improved sign and curb marking visibility. Some of the changes between last fiscal year's budget and the next fiscal year's budget include a ten thousand dollar increase for MIS services and then increases in general supplies such as asphalt purchases due to deferred maintenance. Any questions about our general funded Streets Maintenance Program?
I just wanted to ask about the sidewalk program. Did I hear matching grants possibly?
It's not a grant, but what the, the 2013 policy included a provision that basically stated that the council would, at its convenience and accordance with city finances, authorize a cost share amount up to one thousand dollars per applicant with a maximum set on an annual basis. I believe our current budget includes ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars this year.
Thank you.
I was going to ask a question on Broadway restriping. How, how are we doing on getting the emergency flashing lights on the sidewalks?
I should turn that over to our CAP. Maybe we should talk about that during the capital improvement project, planning budget.
I know, we're waiting for Caltrans for encroachment, but we haven't gotten it.
We're actually waiting for the design piece of that, those beacons. So we're looking at different options of whether or not we need to fully design those or whether or not we can choose an option that will be acceptable to Caltrans when we can install ourselves, which would be faster.
Questions? And also, this opportunity also for the public, if you have any questions, want to verify, please.
No, no, we'll, we'll leave a comment after. Yeah, we want to get through all the budgets, so we have a couple more, so we can, we have a little bit, because we have time to have a comment and then back to council, so.
Noted. All right, so another general funded operation within the Public Works Department that has a distinct fiscal measurement device is the Budget for Parks Maintenance Program. This includes maintenance of our flagship Plaza Park, Cusor Depot Park, Eleven Neighborhood Parks, and Trees and Vegetation along four miles of Bike Pass and the Snowmobile Trail. Some of our amenities include nine playgrounds, two public restroom, dozens of memorial benches, picnic areas and barbecues, water features, a rose garden, a Rynstead Amphitheater, there's a lot of amenities. And in addition to, you know, keeping them up, up to date during the last fiscal year, we had a couple of special, special accomplishments. These included reconstructing the enclosure for solid waste collection containers at the plaza, improving park safety by replacing more playground equipment at the plaza, KT Carter Park, and MacArthur Park, supporting monthly exchanges of banners on the streetlights surrounding the plaza, promoting drought resistance by adapting our turf irrigation schedules at city parks to reduce water use, supporting the installation of wreaths, garlands, and lights on streetlights around the plaza and on Broadway during the winter holidays, supporting the Tuesday night and Friday morning farmers' markets with signage, temporary traffic, and parking controls and electricity. We contracted with a qualified arborist for tree assessment in the Plaza Park, and we initiated a formal needs assessment to drive improved asset management, inform long-range parks maintenance planning, identify opportunities for enhanced programs at facilities, at city facilities or parks. Some of our goals in the next fiscal year include assisting with the city council goals related to parks, as outlined in the council's strategic goals, completing the needs assessment report and preparing recommendations for strategic investment in rehabilitation projects at city parks, serving the needs of Sonoma's cities, citizens by maintaining, operating, and improving the city's parks and trails, continue to serve in a coordination and role for special events with Lisa Jansen, she do cross-train and maximize cross-functional resource sharing efficiencies across our various programs. We also want to install two new water ball fun stations at the Plaza Park adjacent to Carnegie Building, continue to manage our contract for Montini Preserve Fuel Reduction, Hazard-Free Assessment and Trail Maintenance, Vase of Plant Control and Restoration, that's with Sonoma Ecology Center, and continue to manage a contract with Sonoma Ecology Center for maintenance of the Nathanson Creek Ox Grove and the Demonstration Garden that are both located off of East MacArthur Street. And we actually have a budget decrease this year because the transfer for vehicle replacements, the increase of twenty thousand dollars last year will not be continued this year as that vehicle replacement is already funded.
Question, is it within this budget, if there were an expansion of our parks, including, you know, there's a property that's owned for parks, we talked about it before, wanted to put another park somewhere, would it be within this? I know that there's some measure, I'm going to need a letter, and, thank you, funding, would that be within this budget or is this just for the maintenance?
Yeah, so that would be more in the CAP budget.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That's where, that's where measurement comes in as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay, is that a question for parks or?
Do you have enough employees to move more?
Yeah.
So should I be asking that?
We like that question.
Ask every person.
How many do you have?
I think we've had some workforce challenges due to some long-term illness and injury within our teams, so we do have some budget requests in next fiscal year's budget to continue to augment our city employees with some temporary staff to help with, especially with vegetation management. Fire fuels reduction, it's important, it's important aesthetically, and it takes a lot of bodies, especially with the retirement of the glyphosate spray program. We do a lot more mechanical than that, so.
All right. Thank you. There was a typing error, page 44. That is, the command is supposed 2022 to 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Store.
The best two departments for last, right?
No, the three. I'm the last, sorry.
The last three to the last. I ruined my joke, obviously. Page 52 to 55, if you're following along, members of the audience. I'm David Store. I've heard that my burger's next door getting cold, so I will be beef. All right. We do a lot of meetings and planning, we have a lot of hearings, and this year is probably most notable for our start with the housing element. We've done our A P R, we've got the process going between now and the end of January. We got three grants this last year, which is kind of cool, LEAP, REAP, and we also got a $8,000 grant for a tool you've seen on our website to help include more people in the analysis and providing feedback. We've done a series of code amendments to help improve affordable housing, some other issues related to our development code. We've increased our affordable housing department 25%, which is very unique, not only in the A V A area but also throughout the state. We're talking about some budget amendments that will allow for us to keep a better track of our affordable housing agreements. We've added outside each, I think we put in $35,000 for the first time to do that. Also, for the first time, we've added $35,000 to help the council support climate action recommendations, so we're pretty excited about that. We continue to provide direction and guidance on projects in the county, specifically the Amazon Distribution Center the last while, and also the Sonoma Development Center. And we've also been taking some actions relative to sustainability, so that much to do, that's about it, folks. Hope you don't ask any questions.
I guess, why is climate action and solid waste all that in planning?
It is what it is. I had no idea. It kind of happened before I arrived.
Yeah.
We had a sustainability coordinator working in the C S E C. It used to be in Public Works, so soon anything else?
I wasn't thinking that decision's made. I mean, I wasn't involved in that decision, but.
Mike would love to have it. He's one of the co.
Right. Oh, Mike would love to have it, yes.
I understand Travis is not, he's not the person from C S E C any longer, is that right?
Well, he will be.
With the climate.
The climate action committee.
It's a new committee.
Yes, yes.
Oh, just climate action, he's not overseeing the committee though, as he did. Because I mean, he's, he's so, you know, he's so talented. They're going to take a trip to Sebastopol, they have a very successful C R B center right now, so we're trying to find out what we can't do here, so we're still up there finding out.
Yeah, we.
So when we, actually, on 18th, we'll be forming the Climate Action Committee and Travis will be stepping that, so.
That's great.
Right. With respect to P R O S, it started to go away from the parks, the recreation, the open space component, more the environmental side of things, and clearly we hire Travis to deal specifically with environmental.
Exactly, yeah, that's true.
So this way we can concentrate on that area, so, yeah.
When we can put a agenda for the climate?
Looking on the, um, May 18th, or May 20th, I think it's May 20th.
18th.
18th, we're limited.
Yeah.
A few years ago, we budgeted, I think, like half a million dollars for the general plan. Has that been removed or we not, do we have it anymore or?
I'm not sure where the money is.
The money wasn't spent, it's.
No, I know.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I mean, it wasn't set aside, I think we want to do a re-budget and do that, so I have to go back and find, but I don't think we used any, did we use any of those funds?
No, what we've done is focused on the housing element, which is the general plan element that's required and it's timely, so at the end of January 23, we can then start to focus our next fiscal year to figure out how we want to do the other components to update the general plan. The goal was to get the housing element done along with development code problems a little more timely perhaps than the actual long-range general plan.
And I think that would be something that we need to, you know, discuss when we're doing strategic planning, what we want to do with the goals, so that would be something that we'll bring up, so.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, for building and development services, I'll be very brief.
I wanted to, I won't read over all the accomplishments and goals, but I did want to touch on a couple of them, just because they're relatively significant. And this year, we've issued an R F P for a new cloud-based permitting system, and we went ahead and selected a vendor, negotiated a contract, and in development of the permitting system, some of the applications that will be involved. We have a great team made up of finance staff, planning staff, and public works staff, and myself, and other members of the building department, that really are putting together a set of permitting systems that can be used for the encroachment permits, planning applications, building permits, all to be done electronically. So we're trying to design and develop user-friendly applications that can be done online, that can be payments online, those types of things. So we're in the development process currently, we'll be hoping to get to a point where we'll be actually testing it during the summer months and then going live sometime in the fall. So that was a big step with respect to, and a lot of time involved with respect to staff. We also implemented a cloud-based electronic plan review system and developed policies and procedures that go along with that, so we're in a position now that we can take in electronic plans, do electronic plan checking, and process that. We worked on the Sonoma County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and got that adopted earlier in the year, and that is a significant goal, and we'll help this out with a lot of grant funding for emergency and hazardous preparedness. And we also worked on Emergency Operations Center. We have a working group that works on initiatives related to emergency preparedness and response, and it's made up of virtually all departments within the city, and we continue to work on initiatives within that. In terms of goals for next year, as I said, we're going to go, we're hoping to go live in the fall on the new permitting system. We also have new codes that need to be adopted in 2022, 2023, which includes the review of, it's about 12 codes, 6,000 pages of doc, the codes that need to be reviewed, and then we go through development ordinance for adoption, and then have over 70 handouts that we need to update. So it's, there's a lot of work involved in that, and that needs to happen by January 1st of 2023.
And you're going to do all that? Yeah.
I didn't say that. I said we. Then, the other thing that we're, we'll be working on is the building department, the succession planning and transition planning, so we try to figure out the best way to move forward with respect to the department and any kind of transitioning personnel. The numbers with respect to our budget are relatively unremarkable. There are, there is a fairly significant increase related to the management information transfer, and that's a result of the new permitting system, and that amount is $8,270. And that covers the building department, development services.
So during different times, you know, the winter, the summer, with the warming and cooling stations, do you have any information? I don't think we do them, but do you, I'm on the continuum of care board, and they are working on a policy for warming and cooling stations, and I think that really services homeless, homeless people, so do you know anything? I mean, is there anything that the city recognizes or you collaborate with others?
Yeah, the city has never opened up a warming or cooling station at the basement of home, and we have looked at the potential for doing that, fortunately in our climate area. We get the natural air conditioner, so that we don't end up with two, three, four weeks of, you know, excessive heat. Now, that may change in the future, but normally we get some calls that close those down, and so we don't have long-term impacts associated with that. Sonoma County and other cities within Sonoma County have opened up warming and cooling centers, and so we try to work in collaboration with those jurisdictions to, you know, make note of those when they're available, and, but frankly, city staff doesn't, we just don't have a capacity to do that without additional assistance.
We actually did open a, one time, and we only had maybe three or four people. So really, for the amount of people, because we're so inland, I mean, we just, people don't really come here to do, you know, for that, and we have had calls, but we just, we just don't have staff to help them.
Well, I know that S O S has dealt with these issues, so some have, you know, in some way, it would be great to just identify or find a way. I don't know, Chief Rodriguez, if you know anything about it yourself, because I know that there were some issues where homeless people, there was a concern that they were out there on the streets.
Well, S O S has actually taken care of a lot of those issues, especially when the rains hit, we were able to get 12 rooms at our local hotel and paid for them throughout the winter shelter. So, and that's usually when we see less of people up and about. Once the winter shelter closed, that's when we start, begin to see people at their cemeteries or Montini Preserve, or a lot of them go out to Maxwell Creek and that area, so.
Thanks, thank you. I know, it's just, it's an issue, obviously, because I mean, when we had power shut offs, people came to different places to charge their phones, all of those things.
I think the city has opened with collaboration with the county, you know, so the Vets Building, you know, when we had some of those, or Hannah, Fiji and E did one at Hannah.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, some have opened.
I understand a number of people that just want to come to this.
Yeah, those were related to P S, P S.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
Lisa Jansen has an enormous list of accomplishments and what she does, and she's just going to pick out the highlights, so.
I will definitely just pick out the highlights. So what I've done, and you'll notice it, is what I try to do is account for all the different ways we provide services to our community, and they're through many different varieties of either subsidized leases, funding, fee waivers, service contracts, and subsidized utilities. So this year, I think what you're going to notice is a little different, I included all the lease agreements that we have in place that are with our local nonprofits. I actually just realized I missed two, which is the Bachi Sonoma and the Valley of the Moon, which aren't listed. We, this year, the other thing that we're doing as part of the budget, we're looking to support Sonoma Valley Health and Recreation, which is the new entity in charge of our community pool, and so we'll be providing some funding to them per their request. And then, just quickly, I listed all of these 21, 22 accomplishments. I think what I did differently again this year is I reached out to our community grant participants and asked them for what they felt were their biggest accomplishments this past year, and the common theme in their responses this year was that they felt like they made strides in ensuring equity and inclusion. They did this by hiring bilingual staff and instructors, ensuring material was presented in both English and Spanish, reduced rates for their services and programs, and then also did, provided more equity or inclusion by also providing additional scholarships. So that's kind of how the money that we gift, or we give to these organizations, that's how it's going back into the community. As you read through the accomplishments, it's really impressive, and this is just a truncated version, there was quite a few. We felt the need to condense it, it was substantial. Over the past year, I've had the pleasure to work with all 30-plus community partners, and the level of professionalism, the breadth of programming, the desire to continue to add programs and refine their offerings, and their dedication to our community and ensuring that there's equity and inclusion is absolutely amazing. We're really, our community is really lucky to have the city support them in this fashion. So quickly, you'll see, we reinstated some lease agreements. We are, boy, we're, we moved forward with a consultant to help with the homelessness, our strategic homelessness initiatives. I just, there's a lot of information there, I don't want to go over all of it. For fiscal goals for '22 and '23, there's some continuing goals that we haven't accomplished yet, but the goal is really to build on the achievements of this past year. You'll see that we have the work that the Parker Rex Task Force has done, we want to continue to communicate to our community via newsletters, our recreational offerings, looking at some quarterly newsletters, we're looking at, continue to tweak and update our website to ensure that our recreational partners are listed. We have desire to build on the accomplishments of the recreational task force by working with our new PROS, the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission, and hopefully working on a master plan. And I think those are kind of the big highlights. I went ahead and added a couple more tables into your, into your information that include all the other nonprofits that we support through fee waivers, and they're both the Heritage and Community Events that we have identified in our community grants fund, and then just quickly, recommended budget, sorry, that's me. Recommended budget items that are new and different this year. We're looking at a new accounting measure for, to track our water utility subsidies to some of the public facilities, and so you'll notice a $50,000 increase, and really this is a transfer from our, into our community activities budget, but it's all money that, or water that we provide to our community partners that we can directly allocate back and tie into either lease agreements that we have with them, or in some cases, our Sonoma County Regional Parks Department. We subsidize Hughes Field, Teeter Field, Arnold Field to the tune of 50% of the water usage annually, so.
That was previously budgeted in our department, so.
Right. So we're trying to pull it out this year to give a better snapshot of how we're supporting these services or these entities. You'll also see that there's, there's an increase in our community fund to the tune of $24,000, that's due to the increase in revenues that we're seeing and projecting. There's, we're, city staff is recommending that we bring our community partners back up to the fiscal year 1920 funding levels, which then provides you with $48,000 of unallocated funding that is to your discretion of how you want to spend it. We did get a request from the Field of Dreams for $35,000. We did get a request from the Field of Dreams for a thirty-five thousand dollar, three-year funding request to help with offset some of the infrastructure. They have an aging infrastructure at Field of Dreams, and so we have a maintenance agreement with them, and they need some additional cash to keep that facility running smoothly and, and rectify things like the trees, the irrigation, and some other items that they've identified that need to be corrected. And that's not included in this budget, but if you wanted to put, allocate some of the forty-eight thousand in residual, in, in the unallocated portion, you could use that for that, for the thirty-five thousand dollar request from Field of Dreams. We did put funding in the budget, again, for the homeless consultant. We do have forty thousand dollars in for code enforcement. When we're looking at code enforcement, we need, we need someone in the plaza Saturdays and Sundays. We need, we need to help our event organizers with trying to keep the dogs out of the, the dogs out of the plaza, the smoking, and those items. And so that's really what that code enforcement's for. We're looking at hiring a private security company to help with our code enforcement, and Bob feels that he can get them the training that's required so that they can write citations. So that's kind of a nice bonus if we get that passed, because it's definitely needed. There's some bigger issues that are kind of floating around there, around the plaza on the weekends. A lot of pushcart vendors and just people coming in and peddling their wares on the plaza on the weekends when city halls close. The other thing that I identified earlier is the twenty-five thousand dollars in funding for the Sonoma Valley Health and Recreation Association. That's coming out of the pool scholarship, so it's a transfer. So out of the increase of, I think it's two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of costs associated with the, the increases, about a hundred and fifty of it is items that are being, coming from other budgets, they're just getting allocated to this, but they're coming out of other budget strings from previous years. So it's reallocation. Any questions? I'm sorry, it's a lot of information, and I feel rushed.
It's so much. It's, doesn't it do a lot? It's amazing. I couldn't even. It's just so much, and I feel terrible even suggesting that, you know, well, I can't wait for the pro committee, and then maybe I can bring my suggestions first there, but to incubate, you know, for the parkland that's not being used at the moment, that we have a lot of requests from local residents to, to do something about.
Yeah, well, I think so that's some of the, the information or the feedback I'm hearing from either our Parker Recs Task Force or listening to city council meetings, is there's a desire for cultural planning, temporary art programming, Parks Master Plan, and then I've heard, I've heard requests for funding for some of our historical groups. So those are kind of the items that they're not included in this current budget, but have all been discussed, and it's starting to bubble up. So as you work on your, your desires and goals for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Well, I'll keep bringing it up, because the folks in the local home park across from Fifth Street West are, have been eyeing that area for a long time, and most of them are not, they, they just don't have the capability to get to other parks. So, you know, they're older, many don't drive and so forth. So I'll, I'll keep bringing that up, because they keep bringing it up to me, and I, I, it's in my neighborhood, and I'd like to see something happen.
I'm really happy to hear that, what your report, I think we were on that shared governance Zoom meeting, and I felt that from the nonprofit world, there was just, we should do more. This city should do more, we should do it for all of California, I guess. But it was just sort of that, you know, that, sort of like that. But I explained to them all the things, there are no boundaries when it comes to our philanthropy and, and community service. Many of these groups aren't in the city, and we do have the recreation and community services funding that takes place. So I think that I don't, I'm just happy to be able to say that, and I think you've expressed it, or thank you.
Yeah, basically, a lot of events, not only for our own city, for the valley, and even the further, also this is an opportunity. And I look at a lot of, another event, maybe you haven't included, for example, and delegations, unexpected visitors.
Oh, they're in there, Jack.
Okay.
We called them press events and, and other things.
Okay, yeah.
She has five pages.
Yeah. And also, I want to raise this kind of question. And the, that has happened for the Ukraine delegation, you know, that day, the afternoon event, Sherry Ferris, Sister City, yeah, she volunteered, she was very happy, invited, and the, and the council general had the lunch in the girls and the fags. You know, it's kind of not a significant money, but she's ready to pay, but I was wondering, this kind of expenses could be reimbursed by the city, or do we have a policy? Because I really don't want to see an individual citizen pay something, you know, official, you know, you know, this kind of, because although they are happy, they want, they say, oh, we want to make a donation. So that is really the issue. Yeah, so we can check it if any, you know, policy we can follow, if not, and then we can, you know, prepare something.
That would be a sue question.
We don't normally provide funding for lunches or invitations, only because, first of all, they're, they're a nonprofit, you know, they like viewed as, you know, a gift of public funds, so I have to be careful about that. So we don't normally do that, we don't, we wouldn't have a policy like that, so.
We do have a policy, or we don't have.
We do not, and, and normally we would not have a policy, you know, because it could be viewed as a gift of public funds, so.
Actually, that is not, my understanding is not some gift. It's kind of just a, a working wheel, you know, during the working hours, people traveled from the, in the city, come to here, spend hours and hours. That is a guest, is our own city's guest, is not nonprofit only. And, but anyway, that is not thinking, what is the, you know, proper way? And then the nice, because we appreciate our own residents, our citizens, they are generous, and also they are kind, but, you know.
What did you say?
We could, we could fund the sister cities, right? And then it's up to them to, if they wanna take people out to their own, but.
Yes, maybe, you know, like this way, you know, the, I, I don't know, the, what is the best way, or follow the Lisa, or, because these kind of thing, they hesitated to raise this kind of question. But for me, I'm the new, I just like, yeah, it's kind of strange. I said, hey, what's going on, why? I said, maybe I can check with our own city, you know, how to handle it. It's not the money issue that is the, what is the proper way, what is protocol? And we do it nicely, and then if we have a policy, we can follow.
So we, like I said, I mean, we could provide funding to, and we actually, we do cover their membership, yeah?
Cover the membership.
Sister Cities membership, yeah, so. So we're, we're.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. In the community activities section, this is sort of unique, I would love to see this breakout just completely broken out, so obviously the budget is for, you know, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year. I'd like to know exactly where all that nine hundred and twenty-five is going in the future. And then I thought you brought up a really important point, so for like, for example, the vintage house, we give them, or grant them forty thousand dollars a year, but we also, their lease is a dollar a year.
That is correct.
So at market rent, that's considerable. And then you said that we also pay for their water.
Was it vintage house, Chris? Sorry, no, I don't, I don't think it's been the house.
Not them, but some of them, okay.
No, there's a, there's a few others that we do.
Well, for, for all those community partners, whether water's involved or not, I would like to see sort of the full accounting that the city offers them.
Do you want an assessment of what the rent would have been?
Yeah, market rate.
Market rate.
More than just the four thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can we do that? That would be, yeah, okay. So I'm actually gonna blow through the rest of these budgets. The successor agency really is just administrative cost for the wind down of the successor agency.
We are, do we get money? Yes.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Jesus.
Yes, and we actually applied for the full amount this year. I'm not sure whether we were reducing it in the past, but we, and we did get approved for the full two hundred and fifty thousand. So as we were watching the meetings, everybody was getting two hundred and fifty thousand, like, why don't we ask for two hundred and fifty thousand? And, yeah, that was planned, so, so we're good with that.
That's for the year?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So before, but they were, they had reduced it down to fifty and a half.
Yes.
Right, yeah, so. And then I am just gonna kind of blow through the non-departmental facility maintenance. Of course, this is mostly managed by Chris and Mike, and a lot of it is just ongoing utilities, contractual expenses, nothing else that would be in that budget. It's really just that, all the costs that, that don't go into any other department. So it's really contractual utilities, facility repairs, things like that, that are thrown into that budget. And really, the only increase is the transfer for the new cybersecurity software, which is important, but a pain, but very important. And then the transfers, I'm not gonna go through them, but you have a list of all the transfers in and the transfers out from other departments, so you can, and if you have any questions about those, you can just.
I'll answer that.
That's on page seventy-four. Okay, so we have a detailed list of all the, I'm transferring to the general fund, and then seventy-three, I'm sorry, seventy-three.
The prior year.
Oh, prior year, okay. Seventy-three is the current transfer, so you can see what we're transferring in from other departments and then what we're transferring out, so. And we need to have a bit of time here for a public comment, so.
I might suggest we are doing if we were to limit, we have a comment to two minutes, since we do have another meeting that we have to get to.
Yes, yeah, we have the, yeah, we, basically, we have the, you know, six o'clock. Today, I think that we just, they're pretty overwhelming, yeah, these kind of stuff. I, I suggest, you know, we, we can go back and, you know, digest it little by little, and we come back again and discuss. Overall, our financials, it's good shape, you know, the, it's quickly for us to recover. But, and during the past two years, we went running in a deficit. The priority thing is, we need to get additional money from the direct or indirect way, and pay back to our reserve fund, number one. And number two, I'm not sure how many months we put on the reserve fund for each month is, you know, the, how much usually for safety, you know?
Oh, how much?
I figured, yeah, maybe in a couple, couple of months, or two months.
Two months.
It's, right, for the, well, we have.
A reserve?
Yes.
Yeah, reserve the rate for the percentage for your.
Two months expenditure.
Yes, two months expenditure.
Two months expenditure, yes.
Okay, oh, yeah, two months, yeah.
And with the reserve, with our funding from last year, we did restore some of the, almost all of the reserves that we had used, so.
Yeah, that is good, you know, the, some, you know, city, they, even though they don't have any reserve fund, but then, right now, we just only have the two, and we need a thinking, you know, possibly, you know, we can increase to three months, or if possible, if we have money coming in, because we needed to make the full use of each dollars we collected or we provided service, and also prepare the worst-case scenario for, for the future. So the, thank you, everyone, and.
Comment or public comment.
Yeah, pa, oh, yes, this, I'm, right now, I'm open to the public, see, any comments or any questions? Yeah, two minutes for each.
No, we're talking about different departments. I think you should have three minutes per department.
We have to all.
This is a lot of material. I went through this with Madeline last time, several years ago. Two minutes will not do it. I'm gonna take up the first minute to say thank you very much to the city staff who kept things going despite the fact that there were musical chairs in the top positions, including the city council. Thank you very much, staff, and especially to the folks at Public Works. These two people, on my left, you're right, kept things going at Public Works, and they did a great job, and some of us who know appreciate it very much. And Lisa is a treasure, okay? That's it, so that's one minute. I want, I would like to know, I would like to have somebody follow up with the TOE committee to see what percentage they are devoting to publicity and what percentage they're devoting to beautification of the city. In the past, and I don't think this is Texas hyperbole, it was something like eighty percent going to publicity and twenty percent going to beautification. Everybody knows about Sonoma. I worked in Algeria, they know about Sonoma. I've all over Europe, they know about Sonoma. We don't need to spend eighty percent of that money on publicity, we need to spend it on beautification. Park benches around, more of those Broadway lights around the plaza and one block off the plaza, each direction, to highlight the heart of our town, okay? The, the parquet's on the plaza, you can never, ever tell people they need to provide, they don't have enough parking when they come to you with an application, because you've taken away all the parking on those parquet's. I'm all for eating outside, I think it's wonderful, but I don't like the third-world look that we have. It's gotta be cleaned up. Maybe you should not have parking at all on the outer ring, but on, parking only on the inner ring, and put some meters so you don't have to pay somebody to go around with, with, with chocks or whatever. I like the idea that you should negotiate with all of your nonprofits at once, not at the same room, of course, but at once, so that there's some equality in what's provided. I, I'm one of your nonprofits, the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation. We pay a dollar a year for that. We spent, oh, this last year, we spent over seventy thousand dollars on improvements. We don't get an extra forty thousand like the Vintage House. Vintage House provides more services, I understand that. I do not resent the forty thousand, maybe you should give them fifty, who knows? But these things should be considered. Also, I was involved with the Vallejo statue and the designation of June twenty-fourth in perpetuity, resolution by city council of Pueblo Day. Well, we have banners, the city helped us pay for some, and the, the count of the little committee, the Citizens Committee for the Monument paid for some. They were only up for two years, because we really don't have any money, so we got usurped by out in the, out in the vineyard or something.
At a museum.
All right. Yes, thank you.
Are we gonna have a chance to, to comment again?
Yeah, we can discuss more, yeah. Today is another.
I hope you, I hope you all saw this people today.
I will, yeah, I'm just gonna make a comment, so we are.
All right.
On the eighteenth, and we'll be discussing the CIP budget, Public Works.
Those are some things I have on my mind, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you can come back in and have more public comments.
Any more on the public comment? All right.
I've got some comments, thank you.
Sure.
The opportunity to speak on this today, and wow, a lot of work, tried to catch up, keep up with so many different perspectives. I started the meeting by going back to the September city council goals, the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two goals, which called for a long-term parking strategy, objective development standards, and enhancement plan for the plaza park, parklets, citywide, valley-wide governance study, homelessness issues, and a housing, affordable housing strategy, among other things in there. I didn't hear that terribly well integrated into the budget discussion today. And, so that's where I started, and I look forward to, I did hear pieces of it, I shouldn't say that I didn't hear it all. Definitely, there's activity on all, on many of those fronts, but I didn't hear it stitched I had, I was curious about the revisit city ordinances quality of life on page thirty-two, I don't understand. don't understand what that means. In terms of the election expense increase of $75,000, I assume that does not include any plans to move to district-wide elections for the city? That's not something the city's contemplating, you're simply waiting for the city to be forced to do it. I'm active on a number of county-level boards, including transportation-related agencies, and the city, you know, has been a lot of turnover and.
Yes.
So that there hasn't been a lot of presence on those committees.
All right.
But a lot of the climate stuff that is going to impact our economy and is going to impact our quality of life, there are things that are being talked about at the county level that I didn't see reflected in the plans today. Specifically, I'm going to be quick, Vision Zero traffic safety improvements, the reach codes for all electric homes to be implemented at the same time as the new code, code update, as well as EV charger reach codes, and a natural gas, I'm sorry, a gas station, a ban on gas stations, new gas stations. All of these things are happening at the county level, they're, essentially, all the work's been done for the city simply to adopt it locally, and these are things that will increase consistency, counting by. And then finally, I just hope, I didn't see MIMBY fees associated with parks, I know that planning director brought that, that to our city.
All right.
So I was just hoping that those matters could be addressed. Thank you.
Yeah, later on, I want to look at your list. More comments? All right, yeah, Kevin.
Good evening, I know this is a long meeting, so I'll use my two minutes judiciously, there must be inflation on minutes as well.
Yeah.
There was a recent Sun editorial that alleged that the city's finances were basically mismanaged, and, and the ball was hidden. And so when I looked in the report today, I didn't really see anything that said we're all good. And so I, I just was curious to hear from, you know, city staff and the council, if you feel like that the city's finances are managed and that the Sun editorial was not accurate. And then also, let's see, with the affordable housing fund, I think that, that has, has increased, and I was curious, who directs how that money's going to be used, or money's going to be used? Is there a plan for it? And, and I would suggest that a plan for that money would be dedicated for the next SAHA project, or maybe with a cooperation with a nonprofit developer, ID some land, and get that going with that money. And then apropos of that, the tourism improvement district, I think is going to, going to expire sometime in the next five years, or how many years? But anyway, when that is redone, I would suggest that the city claw back some money from that, so that the city gets a cut, a pretty good-sized cut of that money, and that that would go partways at least to the affordable housing fund. And I guess, let me see, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you, Fred. Yeah, you saved us, yeah, wonderful. Any more comments? All right, if not, I want to close public comments. And then, I just said, yeah, we just started, yeah, this is the first in the study session, we need to do the more homework, and come back, what is the best, and then the way to use each dollar? That, that is not easy. I already relined a lot of the items we haven't been mentioning. And then, we have time. All right, yeah, thank you so much, and participating, and also, great talk for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the staff, you're wonderful. You're the ambassadors.